Is your city council. Mayor Teresa Tomlinson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District One. Glenn Davis, District Two. Bruce Huff, District Three. Evelyn Turner-Pugh, Mayor Pro Tem and District Four. Mike Baker, District Five. Gary Allen, District Six. Mimi Woodson, District Seven. Walker Garrett, District Eight. Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor. Skip Henderson, Post Ten at Large Counselor. Tony Washington, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council.
Good afternoon, good evening. And welcome to the August first, 2017 CCG proclamation resolution session. This year is really going by fast. The mayor is not here tonight. I'm Evelyn Turner-Pugh, your Mayor Pro Tem. And as we know, tonight is National Night Out Night. So some of the councilors are in their districts and a lot of people will be going throughout the community. We will have the invocation by Bishop L.D. Skinner, Brethren Life Worship Center, Bishop Skinner.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
God bless you today. Let us pray. Most holy and righteous God, we thank you today for your presence. God, we thank you for your power and we thank you for your peace. Thank you now, God, for this council and all of the great work that they do for this community. Thank you now, Lord, for how you've given them wisdom and knowledge and understanding to know how to do and what to do. Thank you, Lord, as they worked so untiringly and unselfishly to make sure that our citizens are taken care of and that we have a great and a booming city. Thank you, Lord, for the increase and for the progress and how citizens are ministered to, to be better, better citizens in this community. Thank you now for how you have increased us and you've allowed us to be a city that we're proud of and a city that we want to see grow more and more. And God, I pray now your blessings upon these councilors as they will dialogue and, God, give them the wisdom of Solomon to know how to do and what to do and how to entertain all of the many complexities with which they have to deal with. I pray for their families, God, that you will bless them as well. Thank you for their untiring and unselfish service. We pray today in thy name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Governor Skinner. Next, we will have the pledge by the Youth Advisory Council.
Youth Advisory Council.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the symbol for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You want me to give the names now?
At this time, we will have the swearing in of the Youth Advisory Council and then we will hear from the president of the 2017-2018 council at this time. And so as they are sworn in, they will give their name at that time. We can certainly do it individually, but might take a minute.
That's okay.
I'll be led by...
We'll do it the way you had it planned.
Okay, all right.
If you all want to turn around and face me. All right, and say your name. I...
I, Henry Tormack.
Do you swear that I am a resident of Columbus, Georgia?
You swear that I am a resident of Columbus, Georgia.
And that I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully.
And impartially...
And impartially.
...demine myself...
Demine myself.
...as a member of the Youth Advisory Council.
As a member of the Youth Advisory Council.
During my continuance in office.
During my continuance in office.
That I will discharge...
That I will discharge.
...my duties...
My duties.
...to the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
That I will do so...
That I will do so.
...agreeably...
Agreeably.
...with the laws of the United States.
With the laws of the United States.
Of America.
Of America.
State of Georgia.
State of Georgia.
And the Charter of Columbus, Georgia.
And the Charter of Columbus, Georgia.
And now you're due this one in.
Hello, my name is Tiandra Grant and I am a senior at Columbus High School. This is my second year as a member of the YAC and I'm honored to serve as your president. Youth Advisory Council is a group of young people working towards the common purpose of developing their individual leadership skills to strengthen their communities through volunteer service and increased communication with municipal leaders. I am excited to work closely with Youth Advisory Council members to make a positive difference within our community. I am passionate about education, all inclusion, cultural understanding, environmental issues, and making a positive change within my community. I will serve as a voice for the youth and use this platform to make a difference. I can't wait to work hand in hand with my team members, community leaders, state government leaders, to make an extraordinary impact in Columbus. I would like to thank the mayor, the city of Columbus, and Youth Advisory Council for providing this opportunity for me and like-minded youth to be able to make a change in our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, Mayor Pro Tem, we are going to go downstairs and have a talk with our parents, but before we go down, what we'll do is have each of them just to give their name, their grade, and their school, and then they can continue on out the door.
Okay.
All right, we'll start over here.
Hi, my name is Abria Roberts. I'm in the ninth grade at Shaw High School.
My name is Daria Gomez. I'm in the ninth grade at Brookstone High School.
My name is Tyrese Jones and I'm eighth grade in Fort Millsville.
My name is Jonathan Forte. I'm in sixth grade and I'm going to Ray McCullers.
My name is Daniel Nazario Jr. I'm going to sixth grade at Aaron Cohen Middle School.
My name is Anaya Winton. I'm going to the sixth grade at Eddie.
My name is Cleve Smith and I'm a sixth grader at Blackman Road Middle School.
My name is Courtney Fortunato and I'm going to be a tenth grader at Columbus High.
Hi, my name is Lily West and I'm going to be a tenth grader at Columbus High.
Hi, my name is Reginald Lewis and I'm going to be an eighth grader at Ross Job.
Hi, my name is Riley and I'm going to be a seventh grader at Blackman Road.
Hi, my name is Serenity Roscoe and I'm going to be a sixth grader at Eddie Middle School.
Hi, my name is Nandini. I'm going to be an eighth grader at Blackman Road Middle School.
Hi, my name is Paris Delagon. I'm going to be a seventh grader at Baker Middle School.
Hi, my name is Cameron Lawrence and I'm going to be a ninth grader at George Washington Carver High School.
My name is Kayden Burnett and I am in sixth grade going to Aaron Cohen Middle School.
Hi, my name is Taylor Whittaker and I'm about to be in the eighth grade at Aaron Cohen Middle School.
My name is Eric Callan Jr. and I'm in the seventh grade going to Veterans.
Hi, my name is Brianna Owens and I'm going to be a ninth grader at Early College High School.
Hi, my name's Elijah Wallace and I'm a tenth grader at Northside High School.
Hi, my name is Javon Holmes and I will be a senior at Central High School.
I'm Katie Fernandez and I'm going to be an eleventh grader at Columbus High.
I'm Kennedy Perino. I'm going to be a junior at Columbus.
My name's Olivia Hinton and I'll be a junior at Columbus High School.
I'm Sidney McCray and I'll be a junior at Columbus High.
I'm Sanali Patel and I'm going to be a freshman at Columbus High.
My name is Precious Wade. I'm going to be a twelfth grader at Columbus High.
My name is Jade Smith and I'm a senior at Columbus High School.
My name's Nakia Grumsey. I'm a senior at Early College Academy and a student at Columbus State University.
My name is Jonathan Parker and I'm being an eleventh grader at Columbus High School.
I'm Evan Smallwood and I'm going into the eighth grade at Veterans Memorial Middle School.
My name is Jalen Turner and I'm going to the seventh grade at Richards Middle School.
My name is Mayana Hightower. I'm going to eighth grade in Blackman Road Middle School.
My name is Nala Graham and I'm going to be a senior at Northside High School.
My name is Tatiana Moore and I will be a senior at Kendrick High School.
My name is Michaela Nelson. I'll be an eighth grader at East Columbus.
My name is Alfonso Moore and I'm a freshman at Carver High School.
My name is Aiden Anderson and I will be a junior at Columbus High.
My name is Amber Deal and I will be a sophomore at Columbus High.
My name's Alexis Wicknow and I'll be a senior at Northside High School.
My name is Jordy McGinty and I'll be a senior at Kendrick High School.
My name is Vincent Jones. I'll be an eighth grader at East Columbus.
My name is Avonte Robinson. I'll be an eighth grader at Arnold Magnet.
My name is Sekeela Givens and I'll be a senior at Columbus High School.
My name's Namira Khan. I'll be a senior at Columbus High School.
My name's Serenity Tyler and I will be a senior at Columbus High School.
My name is Kalen Carter and I'll be a junior at Hardaway High School.
My name's Christina Stevens and I'll be a sophomore at Hardaway High School.
My name is Eda Archibald and I'll be a sophomore at Carver High School.
My name is Megan Archibald and I am a senior at Hardaway High School.
My name is Sanaya Hood and I will be a sophomore at Shaw High School.
I'm Caitlin Jarvis and I'll be in sixth grade at Aaron Cohen Middle School.
I'm Kaylee Jarvis and I'll be in sixth grade at Aaron Cohen Middle School.
My name is Jasmine Jenkins and I'll be a sixth grader at the Performing Arts School.
My name is Danielle Frazier. I am one of the advisors and I'm with Inspections and Codes Department.
My name is Dr. Sharon Kelly. I'm one of the advisors and I work with the Skokie County School District.
My name is Christopher Bass over the eighth grade caucus and I am with Columbus Parks and Recreation.
My name is Howard Pendleton. I'm workforce director. I've been here since its inception, so it's time for everybody to enjoy.
And we'd just like to recognize any parents that are here tonight. Most of them already probably gone downstairs, so thank you.
Let's give them another hand, Columbus. This is your future. Next, we will go into our proclamation session. Our first set of proclamations will be the peer awards, second quarter peer awards. If Ms. Montgomery, Mr. Dolan, Ms. Scott, Ms. Good evening.
Good evening.
The employees of Columbus Consolidated Government are its most valuable assets and it is important to recognize the various achievements of employees, including the peer award. And whereas the promoting employee excellence through recognition award recognizes employees who make constant contribution, contributions to the organization through outstanding job performance, who set an example of outstanding quality management, teamwork, and our customer service, and who significantly enhance the work environment by contributing to the personal well-being of their coworkers and their families. Whereas Arlene Ledesma Montgomery, if you'll raise your hand or kind of step out when I call your name. An employee of the Public Defenders Office has been selected as recipient for the second quarter 2017. And Matthew Dolan from Public Works, Mary Scott, Inspections and Code, Loretta Stewart, Metra, and Embria Rivers, Parks and Recreation. Whereas all citizens of Columbus and employees of the Consolidated Government are urged to recognize and appreciate the contributions made to the public good by these outstanding employees. Now therefore, Teresa Pike Tomlinson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia hereby proclaim Tuesday, August first, 2017, is your day. And she has set her hand and seal. And if you would like to say something, you can have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Loretta Stewart. It is an honor. I'm just grateful and it's been great being able to serve.
I'm Mary Scott from Inspections and Code and I'm very honored. I'm grateful. I thank all the coworkers that I have in Inspections and Code. I thank God and I'm very honored again. Thank you.
My name is Matthew Dolan. I'm from the Waste Disposal Division within Public Works. I'm truly appreciative of this award and the opportunity to come work here every day. Thanks.
My name's Arlene Ledesma Montgomery. I just want to say thank you for this award and I'll continue to work for my clients and for the citizens of Columbus.
My name is Embria Rivers and I'm just grateful. I'm honored, I'm happy, and I'm happy to be working with a great team at Columbus Parks and Rec.
And it's good when your fellow employees think that much of you. Also during the quarter, we do what we call the Second Quarter Individual Excellence Award. And if Terry Moore from Inspections and Code, please come forward. Good evening.
Hi, thank you. My name is Terry Moore.
Okay.
And I've been here next month, it'll be nineteen years.
Okay.
I didn't even know there was a ward that'd give away this much loot. Pretty good. Real happy. But there's a lot of folks at Inspections and Code that deserve it as much and more as I do and I'm just real thrilled to get it.
Well, that's good.
And I'd like to thank people who recommended me and especially John. John's been a godsend down there and we appreciate him. And to quote what Pop said, "You can always trust a man with a beard." And that's paying off.
Okay, you have your family here with you.
I'm sorry?
You have some family members here with you.
I have my sister and my nieces here.
If they want to come stand with you, they can. Whereas the employees of the Columbus Consolidated Government are its most valuable assets. And whereas it is important to recognize the various achievements of employees. And whereas the Individual Excellence Award is the highest form of recognition given an employee of the Columbus Consolidated Government. And whereas the Individual Excellence Award recognizes employees who make consistent contributions to the organization through outstanding job performance as viewed by supervisors and managers, and who set an example of outstanding quality management, teamwork, and our customer service. And I emphasize that customer service. Whereas Terry Moore, an employee of the Inspections and Codes Department, has been selected as recipient for the second quarter of 2017. And whereas all citizens of Columbus and employees of the Columbus Consolidated Government are urged to recognize and appreciate the contributions made to the public good by this outstanding employee. Now therefore, Teresa Pike Tomlinson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia hereby proclaim Tuesday, August first, 2017, is Terry Moore Day. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay. Congratulations. This more. It's Celebration of Life Butterfly Release Day. Cheryl Johnson, West Central Georgia Cancer Coalition Staff and Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I'm pleased to read into the record this proclamation in honor of Paint the Town Pink, Celebration of Life Butterfly Release Day. Whereas West Central Georgia Cancer Coalition and the city of Columbus, Georgia enthusiastically join the national initiative to fight cancer on the local front with energy, devotion, and compassion. And whereas according to the American Cancer Society, it is estimated there are about 14.5 million cancer survivors in the United States, growing to almost 19 million in 2024, due in part to earlier detection and better treatment. And whereas on August nineteenth, 2017, at Columbus Botanical Gardens, West Central Georgia Cancer Coalition will host, excuse me, a cancer survivor celebration of life butterfly release to celebrate survivorship, honor those who are currently fighting the battle or have lost the battle to cancer, as well as honor the caregivers. And whereas cancer survivors are encouraged to join in celebrating life and honoring the battle against cancer by participating in the Paint the Town Pink Celebration of Life Butterfly Release. And whereas the goal of the Paint the Town Pink Celebration of Life event is to recognize and celebrate those who have journeyed through cancer. And whereas all proceeds will support West Central Georgia Cancer Coalition, a neighbor helping neighbor program which assists cancer patients with their living expenses. And whereas we call upon all citizens to support the efforts of West Central Georgia Cancer Coalition and the volunteers who participate. And we commend the sponsors who will contribute funds to make this year's Paint the Town Pink Celebration of Life Butterfly Release campaign a success. Now therefore, Teresa Pike Tomlinson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, has hereby proclaimed Saturday, August nineteenth, 2017, Paint the Town Pink Celebration of Life Butterfly Release Day. Congratulations and thank you for what you do.
Thank you. It is truly an honor to be here and we have our staff as well as our board member. And of course, Mr. Hughley is our board chair, so we're really honored to have him as well. And we have our committee members. We also have cancer survivors that are here and we would like to invite everyone, including the community, to come out to our butterfly release on August nineteenth from nine until twelve at the Columbus Botanical Gardens. And this is truly an honor for us. We will be celebrating, as you heard, cancer survivors and we encourage everyone to join us in celebrating your life and honoring the battle against cancer by participating in our annual campaign of Paint the Town Pink Celebration of Life. With cancer survivors, their strength and perseverance is remarkable and as well as a testimony to the advancement of our fight against cancer. If anyone, if they've been diagnosed with cancer, they are our survivor and we encourage them to join us on that day. I would like to let the committee as well as the staff to introduce themselves. Thank you.
My name is Peggy Lambert and I'm a cancer survivor and a volunteer.
And I'm Gloria Weston Smart. I am a five-year cancer survivor. And Peggy and I are twins because we actually had surgery on the same day. So I'm a little older than she is because my surgery was first. So, and we've been working with West Central Georgia Cancer Coalition Butterfly Release for the past three years. It's really been our baby and we really would like to challenge each one of you all. I know that if you think about it, there are people that you know in your family, some people that may not be in your family that are going through this battle with cancer and it's a tough one to handle by itself. So we encourage you all to support this event. It's a family affair. We're going to have Trees Columbus there with hands-on activities. We're also going to have Oxbow Meadows there. We'll have face painting, ice cream, and a fun time with testimony. So we just would love for you all to share in this experience. And we also would like for you all to purchase a butterfly in honor or in recognition of someone. So you all have those applications in front of you all. So take advantage of this opportunity to support us as we are striving really to fight this battle to stay alive. So we thank you.
Hello, my name is Tanetta Holt. I'm a staff member at the West Central Georgia Cancer Coalition.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Lang and I'm a long-term member of the board, one of the founding members, I believe, of the board. I'm very proud to be a participant as well.
Good evening. My name is Lawanda Wake Arrington. I'm the office manager and administrative assistant to Ms.
And good evening. I'm Isaiah Hughley. As president of the, or chair of the board, West Central Georgia Cancer Coalition, on behalf of the board, we want to thank you for your support and thank you for this resolution.
And if someone in the public wants to purchase a butterfly, what do they do?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for asking because we do have online availability. They can go online to wcgcc.org or we have, as I said, the flyers out front, or they can call our office at 706-660-1914. Or come to the event.
Okay. Thank you. If you all will come around, so you can shake your hand. Thank you, Mr. Now we will have a proclamation for the Jets, the West Georgia Jets track team. Councilor Thomas.
That track team, are you here with you?
That track team, are you here with your? Come on up front. Coach, you guys, come on up. I'm going to read this proclamation, and in the proclamation, it talks about some of you guys that won some events at the meet. So if I call your name and you're standing here, will you sort of wave so that the TV camera can see who you are and everybody will know who you are? Would you do that? It's further down into the proclamation itself. Whereas the West Georgia Jets is a youth track and field club that trains athletes from ages five to 18 in the tri-city area, and was founded by Coach Marcus McGinty in April of 2011, and whereas since its inception, the West Georgia Jets Club has grown from four athletes to over 50, and sent athletes to the USA, USATF National Junior Olympics every year since 2012. And in 2016, the West Georgia Jets brought home their first national championship in the 12, this says U, is that under, 12-under boys' long jump, earned by Zacquann Farah? Okay. And whereas this year, there were two relay teams and three long jumpers advanced to the USA Track and Field National Junior Olympics in Lawrenceville, Kansas, and whereas only the top two finishers in each heat and next to fastest times overall made it to the finals. Yet despite the final results that did not include the West Georgia Jets, the appearance at the Nationals was a huge win as these student athletes represented their city of Columbus and the state of Georgia. And whereas the 10-under boys relay team included Darlin Ferris, is he here tonight? Kingston Long, Kingsley Long, are y'all relaying? And Braylon Jakes, who finished fifth in their heat at Nationals. And whereas the 10-under girls relay team include Alva Edwards, there's Alva. It's not Alva. Avia. Is that better? Okay. Brooke Ship. Kiana Malahone. No, tell me how. Kiana, okay. And? Tannet? I'm sorry.
Tenasia.
Tenasia Jones. Is she here? All right. Who also finished fifth in their heat. And whereas Braylon Jakes is a member of the 10-under boys 4x1 relay team, also competed in the long jump and landed 29 out of 45. And whereas Patrick Newton Jr., an eight-under long jumper, finished 37 out of 53, while Zacquann Farah, a 14-under long jumper, finished 18 out of 49. And whereas the opportunity to compete and to employ good sportsmanship in the face of defeat has been valuable learning moments for this team, and the City of Columbus recognizes the West Georgia Jets for its medal in competition at the USA Track and Field National Junior Olympics. Now therefore, Teresa Pike Tomlinson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 1st, 2017, West Georgia Jets Youth Track and Field Club Day. Congratulations, guys. Coach, would you want to say something, or?
Actually, I'm a parent. Our coach actually could not be here today because he actually coaches youth football at one of the middle schools, but I just wanted to say prior to these national athletes advancing, they also had to compete in the regionals, and those were actually done in Jacksonville, Florida. The boys 10U relay team actually finished third in the Southeast Region. That included Georgia, Florida, as well as South Carolina. The 10U girls, they actually finished fifth in the Southeast District, again, including those same states. Braylon Jakes, who long jumps for us, he finished third overall. Patrick Newton Jr. finished sixth overall, as well as the Corin Ferras, who is not here, finished second overall in the Southeast District. So these kids have done a phenomenal job over this season, and we're extremely proud of them.
As you should be. Mayor Protem, if there are parents in the audience, we probably need to request other parents in the audience.
And other parents here? Or supporters. Congratulations. Is that trainer for child where you had him to go? Next, we will have Councilor Thomas with Antoine De Model Day? And I know I probably messed that up. Oh, okay, Antoine. How do you pronounce your last name?
De Model.
Okay.
This is a real honor to be able to read this and tell you about this young man. Whereas Columbus, Georgia has produced creative individuals who walk in their calling and represent Columbus well as actors in the film industry, and whereas an actor who has begun to become more visible on television and other media is Columbus, Georgia native, Antoine Davison, known in the industry as Antoine De Model. And whereas Antoine has worked on productions such as BET's The Game, Vampire Diaries, the new season of Tyler Perry, The Haves and Have-nots, Sons 2, The Grave, Zach Lee's production, The Domino Effect, and Fox TV show Star, and whereas Antoine has a starring role as De Mario Morris on TV One's hit crime TV show Fatal Attraction, and is in his third season on the program that airs August 7th, 2017 at 9:00 PM, August 7th, 2017 at 9:00 PM. And whereas Antoine worked on Alvin and the Chipmunks, the road chip in the role of car guy service, I'm sorry, car service guy, and whereas Columbus applauds artists plying their craft and seeking to succeed in the highly competitive industry of film production, and as such joins the friends and family of Antoine De Model in recognizing his achievements. Now therefore, Teresa Pike Tomlinson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 1st, 2017, as Antoine De Model Day. Congratulations. I think some of these folks might recognize you. What do you think?
Well, first, I would like to thank God for this, and I am honored to be here and to be recognized in front of everybody. I would like to thank my family, my friends, and my supporters, because this has not been a, this has not been an easy journey for me in this entertainment industry. And when you have great support systems such as your family and friends that give you great advice on how to conduct yourself in the industry so people can recognize you, and you can be a great role model for others in the community. And you can actually, like I say, be sure to watch me on Fatal Attraction this Monday at 9:00 PM. Only on TV One is De Mario Morris. They actually showed the trailer last night. So thank you very much, and thank you everybody.
If your family was staying and friends. Thank you. Are you going to be in town Thursday? I think it's this Thursday that the school, new school, performing arts school is supposed to have open ribbon cutting.
Antoine, where did you go to school here in Columbus?
Centurion School.
Okay.
Oh, I actually, I will be here Thursday.
Okay, because they're supposed to open a new performing arts school right in the back of us. This Thursday, I don't know what time.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Okay, tomorrow. And I think if somebody will get his name and give it to the school system, school district, so they can contact him about being there, please. I think that would be absolutely wonderful.
Thank you.
Wonderful to have somebody from the Columbus area at our new performing arts school. It'd say a lot to those students who have been selected to go to school there.
Thank you very much.
If you'll come around so we can shake your hand. Next, we will have Ms. Mary A. Day, Day, and her name is Mary Day. She's also one of my high school classmates. And Councilor Garrett is going to do your proclamation. They can come.
Sure. Ms. Day, it's a pleasure to read this proclamation into the record for you. Whereas Mary A. Day was born in Columbus, Georgia to parents Deacon and Mrs. Isaac Rouse, and graduated from Carver High School and Troy State University with a Bachelor of Science degree in Human Resources Management, and whereas she worked for the River Valley Regional Commission for 20 years, 17 years as the Assistant Area Agency on Aging Director, and she amassed more than 30 years of management experience in working with various human services programs. And whereas her responsibilities have included assisting the Area Agency on Aging Director in carrying out its mission, acting on behalf of the director during her absence, assisting the director with all aspects of the comprehensive area plan for older and disabled adults and their caregivers, and whereas during her years with the River Valley Regional Commission, Area Agency on Aging, Mrs. Day has helped many elderly and disabled clients and their caregivers. And whereas Mary A. Day is involved in many civic and social organizations in the community, and is a member of the Business and Professional Women's Club and the Carver High Alumni Association, and whereas Mrs. Day and her husband Tommy C. Day have three sons, Reverend Laquilla Day, and I'm assuming is that his spouse are Nethia? Okay, I guess the spouses are after him, Dornell Day, Renee, and Travis Day, Elizabeth, and eight grandchildren, Alexis, Linnea, Tiffany, Kennedy, Donovan, Dylan, Josiah, and Eason. Now therefore, Teresa Pike Tomlinson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim August 1st, 2017, a day of honor for Mrs. Mary A. Day.
I would like to thank everybody for your support. Thank you, city councilmen for giving me this proclamation. I would like to thank my husband, Tommy Day, standing beside me, who's been with me for 46 years. And I would like to thank my children. God has blessed me with six children, three sons that I birthed, and their three wives, who I say are all my children. So I claim six children, eight grandchildren, and one on the way, which would be nine grandchildren. I thank God for my pastor, Reverend Dr. Anton, who's standing here. I thank God for my church godmother, who's standing beside me. I thank God for my sister-in-law. I thank God for my uncle. I thank God for all of my family members. It's just a joy. It's just a joy to have all my family members stand here because I've been through something. 2017, and I want you all as councilmen to write this down, because a lot of doctors don't know it. A lot of nurses never heard of it. I was diagnosed with amyloidosis, A-M-Y-L-O-I-D-O-S-I-S. It is a rare blood disorder that affects one out of eight million people in the United States. It is not curable, but it's treatable. And by God's grace, I started chemo in September. I finished my chemo in June. My doctor, who is Dr. Kaufman in Atlanta at the Emory University, said that I have made great progress. He said that I inherited all the symptoms of amyloidosis. You could have one, you could have two, and you could have up to 15. I had every symptom. But guess what? I'm going to beat it. I'm going to beat it. And so far, God is healing my body. If you had seen me in December, I couldn't hardly walk, but now by the grace of God, I'm walking a little bit, with a walk-in. So I told my pastor, I stood up in church. In September, I told the church what I had, because I want people to be educated and know about this. It's been around a long time. I met someone that had it back in, diagnosed in 96. People have died with it. People are still living with it. But I told my pastor that I am going to write a book when I get well, and the title of my book is going to be How to Survive Amyloidosis and Get Well. And you got to have support system. And I thank God, you can tell it. This is my support system. If it wasn't for a support system, you would never make it. And I want to thank you all. Thank you all. And I want to commend my classmates from Carver High School, 1968. Way to go. And I want to commend my classmates, Carver High School, 1968, way to go. Way to go, Mayor Pro Tim.
Our next proclamation, Chapter 7 Disabled American Veterans Day. Councilor Garrett, those representatives will come forward. DAV?
My name is Arthur Porter. I'm the chapter adjutant, and I'm a service officer.
My name is Bob Scarborough. I'm the junior vice commander and tournament director.
Gentlemen, we appreciate your service to our country, and it's my pleasure to read this proclamation into the record. Whereas the 9th Annual Disabled American Veterans Golf Tournament will be held on Saturday, August 19th, 2017, at the Follow Me Golf Course in Fort Benning. And whereas the Disabled American Veterans is a nonprofit organization certified with the government to assist veterans and their families. And whereas whenever veterans are called to duty, they are willing to forfeit their lives if necessary to defend the right of Americans to live free. And when they return home, veterans expect to exercise the right to receive the necessary help they need. And whereas in the Chattahoochee Valley, there are approximately 35,000 veterans, and on any given day, there are many veterans who are homeless and are in dire need of assistance. And whereas Chapter 7 Disabled Veteran, American Veterans has orchestrated the fight for improved veteran healthcare on both sides of the Chattahoochee River, and has championed the rights of both veterans and active-duty service members, even when it was unpopular to do so. And whereas the members of Chapter 7 are committed for initiating and sustaining this annual fundraiser, which helps raise the local DAV with providing emergency funds to meet the urgent needs of our veterans for food, clothing, shelter, transportation, and other needs while still fighting for the rights they earned. Now therefore, Teresa Pike Tomlinson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim August 19th, 2017, Chapter 7 Disabled American Veterans Day.
Would you like to say something else?
Yes, ma'am. On behalf of Chapter 7 of the DAV, we would like to thank the City of Columbus for all the support that you've given to the chapter. Thank you.
If you all will come around. Sir, would you like to say something? Okay, you'll come around.
Senator.
Okay. Next, we will have proclamation for National Kids Month, Councilor Henderson. Those individuals who are here for National Kids Month.
Do you want to hold it for next?
Yeah.
Next time?
Okay.
National Kids Month?
No one here.
No, that's next. Okay. We, you want to read it into the record or wait till next time? Let's wait till next time.
Our next proclamation will be National Community Health Center Week. Councilor Henderson.
I know Ms. Lang was here.
And she left.
And she left. We'll, we'll hold these till next month. There's Ms. Lang. We're about to roll on without you. No, 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 welcome, welcome. It is, it's my honor to read this into the, into the record. It reads as follows, "Whereas America's community health centers are at the core of our healthcare system and the nation's safety net, delivering high-quality, cost-effective, and accessible primary and preventative care to all individuals regardless of their ability to pay. Whereas the health center model has been proven to be an effective means of overcoming barriers to access for the medically underserved, and in doing so, improving healthcare outcomes and reducing healthcare costs. And whereas Valley Healthcare System, Inc., is currently one of the 1,400 community health centers as health homes for more than 25 million individuals at more than 9,800 locations across the country. And whereas locally, Valley Healthcare System, Inc. serves more than 11,000 individuals at three locations within the Chattahoochee Valley region. Whereas Valley Healthcare System, Inc. is responsive to the needs of the individual community it serves by offering patient-focused, coordinated preventive and primary healthcare that families and individuals need. And whereas Valley Healthcare System, Inc. and the nation's community health centers are committed to expanding to meet the needs of the communities they serve and to grow their reach, their reach to serve every individual who currently lacks regular access to healthcare home. And whereas National Healthcare Center Week offers the opportunity to recognize America's health centers, their staff, board members, and all of those responsible for the continued success and growth of the program since its creation over 50 years ago. And whereas we encourage every citizen to celebrate the partnership between America's health centers and the communities they serve, and to recognize the important contribution of the Valley Healthcare System, Inc. to Columbus as it improves the quality of life of its citizens. Now therefore, Teresa Pike Tomlinson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim August 13 through 19, 2017, Community Health Center Week."
Thank you so much. Valley Healthcare is not just a community or neighborhood health center, we're Columbus's health center. As you've said, 11,000 individuals have passed through our doors, both here in Columbus and Talbot County and Harris County, where we have satellite. And not only that, but we have provided $3 million in uncompensated care in 2016. And therefore, that's why we are here in this community, we will continue to be here in this community. And next, on the, on the 17th, we will celebrate 25 years here in the Chattahoochee Valley region. Thank you again.
Time goes by fast. Next, we will do a resolution on the Family Table Day.
I'm afraid of this microphone. Is it, Carl, is it talking okay?
Yes, sir.
My wife Eve, Mary Eve, is back there. She's real shy, you know.
If some, if other people want to stand with you, they can.
Yeah, well, let's see here. We're gonna bring them up, just a second. Well, all right, well, my wife and I and our group would like to say it's never too late to be involved in world peace. As you can see, today, it is never too early. As the Bible says, "A little child shall lead them." The organization today, from, we call Taiwan Happy Home World Peace Initiative, and, and, and mind you, in case you forgot, that Taiwan, also known as the Republic of China, is a non-communist country. The other China, big China, is a communist country. These kids, I'd like for you to stand up, please. Come, come here. Everybody, come. Can, can you get them in front of the camera best?
They're getting them.
Okay. Eve, Mary? Yeah, she's, I got her eye on her, okay. So, the children are here to learn about how we do it in the United States. They're here for 10 days. They'll be touring various places around town and Fort Benning, et cetera. And then they're off to Atlanta to visit the Capitol and the governor's office. And then they'll spend three days in Washington DC for tours of Congress and the White House and the other various sites in Washington DC. Now let me say this. It is from the little ones that life goes on. It is the family table where we pass on by example, character expectations. And we learn empathy. The golden rule, that is, little punches before they become big ones. So important today. The grassroots is where, truly where the power lies. We can all learn that these little ripples of love can empower and flood the world with peace. What the world needs now. Really, the world doesn't need no stinking nukes. Amen? Okay, now, after the, this little video of the children, Ronnie Reagan will introduce our visitors. We have, uh...
Hi, I'm Victoria Mitchell, and this year I got to experience Taiwan and all these amazing students. The country of Taiwan was very different, the culture, the language, the food, but people are people, and they're very busy, just like we are in the United States. And so, teaching the concept of family table brought home to myself the value of my family, and spending time and the gift of enjoying one another.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is Renja from Taipei, Taiwan.
I'm Alex, and I'm the ambassador from Taizong, Taiwan.
I'm Rafa, an ambassador from Taiwan.
My name is Summer, I'm from Taipei, Taiwan.
Hello, everyone, my name is Angelica, I'm from Taipei, Taiwan.
My name is Marx, and I'm from Taiwan, St. Francis High School.
Hello, everyone, I am Karen, a delegate from Mottow High in Taizong, Taiwan.
Hello, my name is Crystal, and I'm a delegate of HHWA from Taiwan.
Hello, I'm Joyce, I'm a member of delegation from Keelung, Taiwan.
Hello, everyone, my name is Mirabelle, I represent my hometown, Keelung, Taiwan.
Hi, my name is Brian, and I'm a representative of Taiwan Happy World Alliance.
Hi, my name is Jeanette Chang, representing Taipei, Taiwan, and also as an international student ambassador from Northwestern College in Iowa.
And I'm really proud to be one of the members of the Family Table delegation. And I'm grateful to my family, my country, and the one who helped, and the HHWA in Taiwan for giving me the chance to promote the table concept.
And a lot of appreciation to Mr. and Mrs. Reagan. Without their help, I cannot be so familiar with the delegation.
The definition of family table is positively creating connections with each other by showing our sincere actions through conversations.
When I was little, I used to dine with my parents very often. I thought it was normal at that time. But after I grew up, I seldom have a chance to dine with them, and I missed the harmony and the happiness at that time. Therefore, I would like to share about table to let more people understand the importance of it.
If we spend more time caring about our family, maybe we can reduce some family problems such as domestic violence.
So, table is a daily routine. It can be a small greeting, but it can make a huge impact.
By opening communication with, around the dining table, we can bound family members together. And table is a way of sharing, and sharing is always a way to minimize the sadness and maximize the happiness.
I've found that when we can come together and sit around a table and have a conversation, we can begin to go beyond hearing one another, and we can begin to understand. We can ask one another questions, and we can really listen to a person's heart when we can look into their eyes and sense where they're coming from and, and learn from their experiences. And even when we disagree, we can begin to build a bridge and to resolve conflict and come to understand one another. And when we do this, we can build for the future, we can begin a new tradition of passing on the value of getting together and having a conversation and resolving our conflicts in a peaceful, loving manner.
Thank y'all for allowing us to be here, and it's, it's just such a joy and a privilege for my husband Wayne Reagan and I to be volunteers in Taiwan and work with these amazing students. Happy Home World Alliance was founded by General Secretary Brandon Chong, and it is led by he and his wife Lydia, and his daughter Jeanette. These people have dedicated their lives to, to really building up strong families and making world peace. And these students are here as delegates from Taiwan to promote strong family values, and we just appreciate so much you're allowing us to be here and to be a part of it. And one of our students would like to express his love and appreciation for you. Alex?
Good evening, and I'm Alex Lu, and I'm from Taizong, Taiwan, and which is the sister city with Columbus, Georgia, since 1997. So wow, it's 20 years, so long. And although Taiwan is a small place, but it is full of beautiful scenery and beautiful human beings. And I really recommend you to come to Taiwan, and you will find out that soon. Okay, I'm not advertising. So we are here representing the family table value, and we really care about each other with these five letters. And it is actually the acronym, and the meanings of them is to bridge, build a bridge and connecting one and another to communicate harmoniously. So it's really my pleasure and my honor with my delegates here, and thanks you all.
I want to read the resolution. Recognizing July 30 of 2017 as Family Table Day in Columbus, Georgia. Whereas the city of Columbus, the state of Georgia, and our entire nation continue to confront the challenge of increased divorce rate and the breakdown of the family unit. Whereas an awareness of strong family values and practices is a powerful way to heal and transform our lives and communities, to recognize the dignity and worth of every human being, and to promote peace and harmony among all people. Whereas the family values and practices of communicating around the table were epitomized in the lives and work of leaders in the United States and Taiwan. Whereas 2017 marks the 20th anniversary... Whereas, 2017 marks the 20th anniversary of Columbus, Georgia becoming a sister city with Taizong, Taiwan. Whereas, groups throughout the United States and Taiwan will sponsor projects and programs to create greater awareness and consciousness of family table values and practices of peaceful communication, including Spring Cuplets, an International Sibling Day, Summer Leadership Summit, and Family Table Delegation, Autumn Happy Home Day, Winter Happy Marriage Day, and Christmas. And whereas, we in Columbus, Georgia, a world-class city in the United States in partnership with Taiwan, have a great opportunity to focus the hearts and minds of our citizens on building strong families and celebrating the season for family table. Now therefore, the council of Columbus, Georgia, hereby resolves, the members of this council recognize the importance of strong family values and practices of peaceful communication. And we hereby declare July 30th, 2017, as Family Table Day in Columbus, Georgia. And we will give you, we have two original copies here for you. And this was introduced at a regular council, at a council meeting here, the first day of August, 2017. Move for its adoption. Did you have something else you wanted to say?
We have a presentation for you. May I present you?
Oh, okay. You'll put it in the mayor's, the mayor's, put it in the mayor's office. Oh, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. And we have a resolution. I want to give you that too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On behalf of our delegation, we are so grateful that your support, that we want to make this into a worldwide momentum. And we, everybody get together around table and family have peace, the country have a peace, and whole world have a peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all want to come around and shake hands? Welcome.
Thank you again.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Welcome. 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 Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. How is it? Good to see you. I'm a senior salaried.
Yeah, restaurant stay out of trouble.
So you just can't stay out of it? Okay. How are you? Good to see you. I have several resolutions. Expressing appreciation to Ms. Evergreen Covington for her meritorious service on the Board of Family and Children Services. Ms. Jackie Barnes for her service on the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission. Ms. Melinda Stovall for her service on Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission. Ms. Robbie Montfort for her service on Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission. Mr. Jason Cooper for his service, meritorious service on Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission. Appreciation to Ms. Teresa Terry Pike for her service on Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission. Mr. Ronald Tate for his service on Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission. And Ms. Marshall Collins for her service on Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission. I have a resolution recognizing Master Sergeant Vincent. Well, let me approve those. Get approval of those first resolutions. Okay, all in favor? And?
I'm retired Army Colonel Buzz McKay, and I'm here to represent those local members of the Georgia Military Veterans Hall of Fame for this recognition that the mayor and the council has put together for them.
Okay. Just a minute, let me get that resolution. Is that the first one? This one? It's one before that? Okay. Whereas 12 local individuals have been recognized for their past service in the armed forces. Whereas Master Sergeant Vincent Millio, deceased. Colonel Ralph Hackett Jr., retired. Duke Double Day, Master Sergeant Vincent Farrell, deceased. Senator Ed Harvison, Master Sergeant Milton Lockett Jr., retired. Colonel Robert S. Portisheff, retired. Colonel Donald McKay Jr., retired. Colonel Carlton Savoy, Savory, retired. Master Sergeant Earl Burke, killed in action. Lieutenant General Carmen Cabeza, retired. And Master Sergeant Michael Dover, retired, having inducted into the Georgia Military Veterans Hall of Fame. Whereas, all have been recognized for past heroic acts and notable achievements. And whereas, the accomplishments of these inductees are worthy of special recognition by this council, we hereby recognize those individuals upon their induction into the Georgia Military Veterans Hall of Fame and illustrious service to their country. Let a copy of this resolution be forwarded to each inductee or family member. Introduced at a regular council meeting, August 1st. Move for its adoption. So we have it. And your name, sir?
Donald Mathis McKay Jr., call me Buzz.
Okay. If you'll come around.
God bless you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
I'm not going to give you the phone, but. Good to meet you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. And we have one condolence resolution. And that's expressing condolences and deep sympathies to the family of Mr. James Alcantara. Move for his adoption. It's adopted. And that's my last resolution that I have listed. We are adjourned. Thank you.